Okay, good evening, um it is black thirty one. November ninth, Mount Vernon Village School uh school board meeting, welcome to our. What members and administrators and also our guests in the audience. Dana will record and anybody on line yet, Steve or them?
We have one attendee.
Okay, welcome. Um I will start by reading the. Public comment procedure. Uh we will take public comment tonight from our virtual audience. If you wish to speak during the public comment sessions, we'll have two. We will allow in person guests to speak first for three minutes. Once we go through all our in person guests, we will open it up for virtual speakers on Zoom. In order to speak, please do the following, raise your virtual hand. Enter your full name in your avatar profile. When speaking, turn your camera on, please, and say your full name and town of residence. And when those are complete, you'll also have three minutes to speak. Um and we will start with first. Public input, do we have anybody from our audience who would like to speak? And this person online have their hand up.
Person online, no hand.
So our next item is to approve the consent agenda, which tonight is one item, which is the draft minutes from our. Meeting of October twelfth, do. Any of our board members that are here, and I should mention that Mr. Perez is. En route to the meeting, so we will have four members here tonight, but. Anything on the minutes?
I don't have anything.
I don't have any, I'll take a motion to accept. Consent agenda, item number one, which is the draft minutes from October twelve.
Make that motion.
I will second that.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Our next item. Uh is the November principals report and Mr. Letland.
Hi, good evening, um just a couple of quick highlights, we don't have a presentation this evening, it'll be in December. Um just want to hit a couple of things, so. Turns a community busy month. A lot of good stuff, Veterans Day today, um just want to thank the veterans in our community, Mr. Martinez on our staff, a veteran. Uh real nice ceremony this morning, thank you to Ms. Lawrence for coordinating that, did a great job. Um second and fifth graders really were the the focus of uh they they did the, they were the stars of the show, if you will. Uh did a great job this morning and um just real positive feedback and a and a really. Really nice um um uh ceremony this morning, so uh thank you Mackenzie and and team. Um Operation Pumpkin, a tradition, South Egan High School came down, they did uh the tradition of the performance and the pumpkins went really well. Uh so thank you to Mr. Brooks from South Egan and his team. The Olympics Forum, they did, they did a great job, it was a great day, of course, our costume parade culminated. Uh act some some fun costumes and a a great day. Uh we had our special friend Grandparent Day. Uh also in October and we had our fire station visit, thank you to Chief Wilson. Uh it was uh it was, that was also a traditional uh thing that we've done uh and a great day. Um just real quick, I just want to just quick highlight, you know, our goals, uh math reading SEL on the math front. Um I've been spending quite a bit of time uh with our teams this year, Charlene as well. Um using the Concept Quest um enrichment. Um it's it's sort of a, it's it's a resource within bridges. Um gives us, you know, it's a lot of opportunity to target enrichment with students, students, they're sort of some of our higher achievers, ready for the next. Uh depth, uh I would say, when it comes to some of the concepts that we're teaching, so. Uh we've been having conversations, teachers are really digging in on that, started over the summer. And really seeing it um with kids in classrooms has been uh has been exciting. Um and just the conversations around math continues to be. Um just super positive and students are engaged at a high level, thank you Charlene, thank you. To all of our teachers on on the the math front, I know you're gonna hear a little bit more about math tonight. Um on the reading front, uh we have a a large percentage of our staff in letters training. We are deep in that right now, I actually started this this uh recently. Um try not to look at Christine, she knows that um I've been talking about this for a while, I've dug in recently on it. Um and uh it's going, it's going well uh across the board, Maggie did a book study this summer. And uh there's just a lot of excitement around the training, around the the methods, around the strategies, the science of reading. Um so I'm I'm very impressed with the work uh our staff is doing, professional development, this is really, this is more than just going to a workshop, this is. This is what you want in PD, this is um. Deep training, it's sort of like a course and then it's it's um. Right, and then um it's it's, you're using it. Daily with kids and it's a, it's a, it's really a mindset, it's an approach, um it's not a resource, but it really is. A way to um to approach literacy and reading, so um really excited, very impressed with the deep work our our staff's doing with that. Um also, I just wanted to quickly highlight. Um we've started talking about what we call, what what is called picture prompts. Um it's a way to um engage students in narrative writing, narrative writing is a big piece. Of uh our curriculum, narrative writing, opinion writing and um descriptive writing, narrative writing being. An area that is a focus of the state test, we don't teach to the test. But it is something that um we're putting a a conversation around and a and a focus on. Um and picture prompts is uh I'll maybe present, presentation for a later board meeting. Show you, but it's an area of conversation uh with teachers and um we've been doing some work with that around narrative writing. Uh we've actually started giving the modulators. Uh this past week, two of our grade levels gave the modulators and the modulators are sort of, I'll just say, kind of a sample of the state test. Um it's not the state test, but it gives up some. Um similar type questions, similar plat- the platform is the same platform. Um but really, it's a great instructional tool, actually, there's a lot of depth to the questions on the state test. And um so this is a way that we sort of bridge what we're doing in our classrooms every day to the assessment that they see uh in the spring. And then finally, yesterday, we had a guest. Uh from response, the Center for Responsive Classroom, um responsive classroom is the approach that we take to. Um building community, uh managing our school, managing the climate and the culture of our school, all the way from the hallways to. The lunch, to the playground, to the classrooms, and um so. I always say, we're not just doing responsive classroom, we're doing responsive school here. And so the guest was from the Center for Responsive Schools. Um spent the entire day here, walked around. Literally took notes on everything from, like I say, you know, the playground, the 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 lunches. To uh instruction in the classroom, gave us a very thorough report. That we're digging in on, um we're gonna use that, it's very usable feedback uh for us. Um it was very positive, the climate culture very positive. Um but some areas that we can definitely use as constructive feed feedback. Um so that we can continue to improve and always, that's that's the name of the game, right? So uh we're all learners and uh so Beth Osgood was her name, she was here, uh very impressed with our school, very impressed with the climate. Uh but some very useful feedback uh yesterday, so. Uh that's under the SEL goal, which is an ongoing conversation uh on our staff, so. Uh it's been a great month, busy month, and uh now we're we're charging into the holiday season, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Tom answer questions? I've got a, I've got a couple, but I'll defer to you both. You good? Um I I read that you were able to buy an interactive display. Of course, for use, and I'm just curious what that, what that means, I think it's great, but I just was. Curious.
Yeah, so this was, this was part of um actually, that screen was part of the special ed. Um department and was targeted specifically to special education.
Okay.
Um so just sort of zoom back for a second, so. Uh as you probably know, in our classrooms, we have smart boards, we have a combination of smart boards, interactive boards, very similar. Uh in terms of that they're touch sensitive, so for instruction, teachers can. Um they can write on them, sort of like a whiteboard, students can touch the the screen to. You know, interact with the lesson, whatever the instructional um aspect of the lesson is that they would use for that interactive piece. Um very common smart boards, interactive boards. The latest technology is actually something a little more flexible and adaptable to the classroom and the setup in the classroom, so. Imagine something like this screen. Um that is is um. Interactive, uh touch sensitive. Um but is also flexible that you can move it around, so this one that we actually installed for special ed, because the specialist space, small space, it is actually installed on the wall. The vision is that these are gonna be mobile, so that in a classroom. You know, as we start to age out the technology that we've had over the next few years, um. The interactive board would be uh it's sort of on wheels on a little cart and and it can be wheel wrapped, it was kind of like that, but it can be wheel around a classroom, so. You know, right now, the teacher's bound to orienting around wherever the TV isn't sold, it's it's green, I should say, installed. Um this just gives you a lot more adaptability, flexibility um around instruction, so. Long answer to your question, but uh that actually is in a special ed space. Um it's being used, uh it's really fun to watch, kids are very engaged, it's it's um. It's very helpful for students that are learning to read. Um just literacy uh strategies that are being used that can become very engaging on that, on that screen, so.
Thank you.
We're excited about it, yeah.
Uh NWEA assessment, you finished, when do we get those results? Is that something we see in January, February, or is it sooner than that, or how does that work?
We send those home to families, so um families, along with progress reports, will receive those next week. Uh during conferences uh and or after conferences. NWEA is something in the past that we've shared more publicly, but because we're focusing more on new capture stats with our school boards. Uh we hadn't put it on the agenda.
Okay. But I do think we're in the works of. Um at fourth, in in the sixth, you know. Fourth grade level, the representative is deeper, fourth and sixth grade. At some point, we just haven't figured out exactly when, Peter, when we want to do that, that's how I make a lot of more data. Yeah, just uh in terms of NEWA, we do give NEWA three times a year here. We give it in math and reading and uh and we do send reports home on on the NEWA, so um. It it's, it's a pretty, pretty easy report to read, you know, it's got a nice, excuse me, visual. Uh representation there of where the students grow and learning, you know, so. Those will go home with with reports, I think.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And one question ahead of, and I may have asked this before, and I apologize if I have. Music instruments in the music program. Do we have access for children who can't, families that can't afford to participate? That they would still be able to participate and we, we figure out a way to pay for the instrument?
So for like classroom instruction?
Yeah, we don't currently, we've um some years, we've had a band as an after school opportunity. Um in some years, we haven't really, um it's dependent on whether or not we have something that's able to support that program. So a number of years ago, actually, um the AMS band teacher retired and he came up here for a number of years and was our band teacher up here and and. Fortunately, we don't. Um and our current music teacher has been supporting chorus, so that would be a lot over her to try to do band as well, so um. When we moved from two, you know, from from students experiencing one music class a week to um. An extra one every other week, we uh um Tom and I worked with the music teacher to really have an emphasis on the instrument side of music. So we've been working towards adding more and more of that in.
It's a good question, and it's, it has been, it's, so when we talk about co-curriculums, as a matter of fact, I have a couple on the agenda tonight. I have staff. Very regularly coming to me with proposals for co-curriculums, so. It's something that is in the um, you know, it's on the list. It's something that can definitely come forward to the board, it's something that I could definitely bring forward. It's. Band is pretty complicated, just in that we need the right person, we need the right resources, um. Our numbers limit, they do limit us to a to a certain extent here, there's also, just having been in the middle school life that I that I was in. Um there's, you gotta have some level of feeder into the band to get them to the place of. A lot of times, kids start with lessons and then they work into, so it's sort of that progression. Um so it's a good, it's a good question, um and uh. I would be interested in if there's anyone out there that would be interested in, um I haven't seen it in our current staff right now. Um but if somebody, you know, would be interested in maybe pursuing. Developing that a little more. Um kind of fits into our conversation about middle school and, you know, those those transitions as kids move. Move forward in the grades.
Because it is an equity issue with. And they, and then when they all come together in South Egan, it's a different experience, we talked about that. Last year, we did a whole review of all the. But it's hard to be on your scale.
It is.
You want to do your flip proposals or they can run down?
Yeah, so if I may, um I put two proposals um into. The board into the agenda tonight, one is uh flag football, which you might have heard a little about. Flag football is going to be very popular, there's a lot of students interested in this. Uh Scott Sossier is our new PE teacher, um is very interested in moving this forward and even. Jumping over to spring, because we're gonna just skip over winter up here, um go right to spring. He's looking to do a little more in the spring, but uh yeah, so flag football, um as you can see, is one of the proposals, and then the other one is uh robotics. Which I'm excited about, uh speaking of theater to middle school. Um I know there have been robotics programs here before. Um it's kind of a year to year thing, again, whether there's interest and whether there's in terms of like, if we have the the. The advisor that can do this, um it's a big commitment, uh but we do have a proposal to um bring forward a program. Uh for a number of weeks, uh we have. Actually, behind you right there is the board for the program. Um and then this would. The 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 program for our schools for elementary would then down the road feed into the middle school program, which ultimately feeds into the high school robotics program. So you're probably familiar with, um very competitive, it's like going to a, you know, a state football game, I mean, it's a lot of excitement. Yeah, so um so I'm excited about this, I, it's a good opportunity. Um we may not not have, we may not have dozens of kids. But um it definitely meets the needs of some of our students that are really interested in those those steam STEM type. Programming coding um type habits, so. Those are the two.
Questions, comments, not either?
I gotta come to our flag football guest and parents.
It's actually thanks to the South Egan community that last night. I learned that.
You, do you need any funding for the flag football?
No, no, we actually have flags, we have footballs. We have a field.
Yeah, my other question was, does Clark Wilkins have a team that, so they could be like.
We could challenge the owl, yeah, yeah, I mean, the falcon is ready to go. Monty, uh Monty's got an arm too, you should see him out there, so we'll, I'll I'll get in touch with Catherine, we can work that out. Well, I've already challenged them to a pickleball tournament, so that may be coming, that's a staff thing, absolutely, I'll I'll talk to you.
You want, I'll I'll take a motion to accept both the flag football and the robotics. All those in favor? Passes for nothing?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Next up, um does anybody? From leadership want to touch down on the AMS principals report? Or are there any questions or comments from? And Roger is not here, did we have any questions about the film, facilities update? He presented. I did, I was on the uh Brick School call the other day for the Brick School Building Committee. And I just asked Roger, because one of our projects is for kids to paint the bathrooms, so I can do. So I just threw up to Roger, could you find out how much the all in one sinks are? Are so. You guys know, you've seen them everywhere, so water and and air dry, so it's one unit rather than having three units. Fossils left on it. Have no idea how much they are, if they're stupid expensive, then we may happen to have a warrant article for it. He's gonna find out, so this. I don't know, I just came to my head. So. Um hey, George.
Evening, guys.
Our next item on our agenda tonight is to review a staff retirement, so I refer to. Mr. Barry.
Yeah, so uh. This is, we have uh. Included in the board notes some information about uh. Retirement requests and uh there's an amendment, instead of two, there is going to be one. And. What I'm hoping is uh that the board will accept the the one retirement request as presented.
And that's the one that would be for the end of this full year.
Correct.
Is there any reason we wouldn't accept it?
We always reluctantly. Accept it with reluctance. Well deserved.
Yes. And I guess my question is, is the retirement accounted for in next year's budget?
There's no additional.
So, okay, just to, so it includes that retire.
Thank you, Mike. And we are up to, actually, I'm gonna insert one question or request I had from uh. Christine Peter, she's a chair of the SAU. Board, um I guess, Mike, you're gonna interview for the Director of Services.
Yeah, Director of Student Services.
On the sixteenth, which I believe is a Thursday. Next Thursday. From one to five, those are gonna take place at the brick.
Yeah, we want to about four thirty.
So Christine's ask of our board was if anybody wanted to participate and attend. Then make yourself available, though, we don't have to, but.
For a couple of board members from the whole SAU board to participate. As part of the interview committee.
And again, that's Thursday, one to four, four thirty, that that hurts. And a little sidebar there, thank you.
Did we need to accept that? I don't think we officially accepted it, we talked about whether we might or might not, but I don't think we actually said.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion to accept the uh retirement as presented. All those in favor? With with regret, accepted, thank you. And we are up to this Miss Spacey with draft two.
Yes.
Of our twenty five budget.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
So I shared the presentation with um with all of you those that go, they should have that. Um and the budget file has been updated with draft two. So the biggest change from draft one to draft two is the SEU assessment, which is projected to be an increase of. Thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty five dollars from last year. What's driving the increase is primarily an increase in student enrollment. Um we are still waiting for the DOE to publish the average daily membership and attendance numbers for the districts, so the. SEU enforcement is still unofficial, but I'm hoping to get that any day, uh we we. Will have that for the public hearing at the end of this month, the SEU budget public hearing. Um Primax also provided us with an updated. Property and liability amount, so that's an increase of one thousand nine hundred and forty six dollars. There were some increases in workers' comp and unemployment comp. And a small reduction in the health and dental or the health uh GMR. From twenty one point nine to twenty one point eight. So that accounts for most of the miscellaneous changes. So the changes resulted in a net budget increase of fourteen thousand one hundred ninety five dollars. So the FY twenty five draft two operating budget is a five point nine percent increase, three hundred seventy two thousand four oh seven. Over the FY twenty four adopted budget. Of that increase to six seven two three one is the difference between. The FY twenty four operating budget and the FY twenty five default. And the difference between the FY twenty five default and the FY twenty five proposed budget is one oh five, one seventy six.
So, Amy.
Yep.
This was presented in brief by Mike last night at the library and it was five eight, so it's gone up. Point one. Did I remember that?
Yeah, I presented the draft one budget.
So it's, it's ticked up a little bit.
Yep, yep. Based on the um the fourteen thousand.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're going in the wrong direction.
So the only change in the budget drivers from draft one to draft two is a slight change in. Um health insurance from twenty one point nine to twenty one point eight. And had the increase been a more typical, uh what we've seen, a four percent increase. The health insurance line. Would have been about seventy seven thousand five hundred dollars less. So it it had a dramatic impact on this budget. So the rest of the drivers are all the same. So the default calculation, um. The difference between the FY twenty four voted budget and default are the items that are contractually required. Regular red salaries and benefits, tuition to the Emma School District, the SEU apportionment. Grants and food services, they're offset by revenue and do not affect the tax impact and student services, including transportation. Uh which in next year's budget is proposed to decrease. So this year, the total change is four point three percent or two six seven two three one. For the proposed budget calculation, the difference between the FY twenty five default and the uh FY twenty five proposed. Includes items that are not required to be included in the default and are potentially at risk of not being funded. The total amount for these items um are the salary and benefit adjustments for non-union employees. Facilities include items like utilities, repairs and preventive maintenance. The food service transfer to cover potential shortfalls in the food service budget. Technology funds for items like device replacement, software supplies. And the cost difference in the regular ed transportation contract. So the total difference between the default and the proposed is one oh five, one seven six. Or one point six percent. Uh the long-term facilities funding plan, we covered this in draft one, but I just left the slide in uh for your reference. And as Brid shows, all the projects and proposed funding plans through FY forty one. Um and as noted, uh Roger Crestner, Director of Facilities, is looking to refresh and have an update of this um for this spring. So. Yeah, the capital reserve fund review, um the recommendation for the reserve funds remains unchanged from draft one. With the property maintenance at fifty thousand students with disabilities, we probably want to talk about what. Name you might want to change that to, I mentioned that at the last. Um draft, you can kind of recommend.
Just special education.
Okay, yes. Um so that remains at twenty thousand health insurance at fifteen thousand and the new tech. Technology fund that we discussed during for draft one at twenty five thousand.
We change that name, do we have to propose it or do you just change it in the book?
We have to do one. So the total appropriation change from FY twenty four to twenty five, including the budget. And all the fund requests is three fifty two, four oh seven. And we're, yeah, we're moving along in the calendar, um I do have an update on the budget committee. Um that committee did meet on October thirtieth and we had three members. Uh met with them, reviewed the budget presentation and the budget file. Unfortunately, one member had to resign, but he was quickly replaced, so. Um we just sent out a email to get that person set up with an SAU thirty nine email. Uh they are planning to meet on. They are planning to meet again on November twenty eighth, I believe. Draft three will be presented to the board on December fourteenth and we could talk about public hearing preparation. At that point. I do see one of the members of the budget committee is here and I think they're on the agenda, so. So hopefully Matt can say a few words, but happy to have a budget committee this year and. They are, they're all new, but really excited to dive in and do some analysis and. We went through quite a bit of information. They were looking for sort of their charge on, you know, what their what their charge was. The Amherst. School district moderator just did a nice handbook for the Ways and Means Committee, so I just forwarded that on to them. To give them an idea on what their their scope of work is. But I think it would be nice for this group to have something like that, so that they have a clear. Understanding. Of what their their scope is. So that's where we are, the budget, not not a whole lot of changes from. From draft one.
Thank you, questions or comments or anything?
So I guess my only comment would be outside with everything we're obligated. Really, it's a one point six variance, which to me, that's the message that needs to go across, which is. Which is really great. Which is really good. I mean, you would like to see. As little of an increase as we can, but some things we cannot control, or we're limited in how we can control this, so. Very good job, and thank you for all the time.
So why don't we just segue to. That and your update reports are welcome.
So, yeah. I'm Matty Black, as was kind of mentioned, I don't have any prior experience, so we're just kind of. Just starting to get our people here. I was very pleased to see the document that you found and you forwarded to like, yeah, it's great to have an actual kind of description of exactly what the mandate is and all that stuff. So we just started so far, you know, where I've got a couple of. Categories that we that I've got assigned to me, so I'm just starting to dig into the the numbers and the document. Very much focusing on, you know, where is the one, where is that one percent that's a. Non-mandatory increase and just, you know, taking into, you know, what the reasoning behind and stuff like that. So, you know, my 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 plan, I could first before is just to kind of dig into the numbers. I like the fact that there's a kind of a public mechanism to submit questions to get answered, you know, I like to have things kind of written down. Just kind of talking about, so having it submitted goes into a form, it's answered publicly, so everybody can see it, you know, that's something I'm planning on leveraging.
And we, they all came on board after we had the subcommittee meetings scheduled. So what I recommended to them is as they dig in, if they have questions and want to have. You know, an ad hoc meeting with, say, the Director of Student Services or the facilities or whoever. To let me know and I'll arrange that, and certainly whoever, we can invite a board member as well. To that meeting, so. So we're a little bit ad hoc, but I think we'll still be able to get the job done.
Where are you meeting that when you do get together?
We have the meeting we have scheduled next, I think we've got some space in the library.
And George, are you?
I didn't make the last meeting. Yeah, that's what I remembered, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And that handbook, can you, is that available for?
Yeah, the moderator from the Amherst created it, so.
Is it, if it's helpful.
I think it would be good to add something. Whoever is in that will. Have a clear understanding of what they're they're supposed to be doing.
I will say that last night there was. A meet and greet with Mike. Over at the library. And the budget was as as it was presented was, you know, draft one. But there was already some rumblings about. Five eight, so. Our. We've got our work cut out for us collectively. To. Be as lean as we can, which I think we always have been. But the other part of that, I think, and we all agree is is we gotta we gotta sell it and spell it out. So. But I think. Again, like there was a little bit of rumblings at the meeting. From a few people about. The five eight.
Yeah. So next month in general or?
Yeah, yeah, well, the total number is three seventy two. And John can probably speak to it, but the town is is. Bundling their projects similarly to how we bundled our projects. And our number equals what their number is going to be in town, so there's a question of whether the panel again can. Afford, we can afford. All the elements of not only the school, but what the town is looking to do with fire trucks, dump trucks. Buildings and stuff like that, so.
So next month's presentation will include. A projection of revenue, so that will give you more information on the tax impact, so that's probably. Or I would guess most folks will want to. Spend their time and focus on. As opposed to just.
Right, oh, yeah, I thought we've done a good job over the years of. Denoting that.
Yeah.
This was.
So we'll all, and that's the plan for the December meetings is to have have that information for the board and then have it nailed down for public here.
We all know the slides that people want. We did.
Magic slides. Okay, we are up to the board discussion of our goals. I think it's a little study.
Yeah, that was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Middle School Study Committee update as requested by Miss Lawrence. And I'm gonna defer to. Steven Mike about where we are with the. The companies that we receive bids from, but also Andrew, I'd like you to. Speak to it to update us on where we are.
Okay, sure, just a quick review, this time last year on presentation was a sixty thousand dollars article for a facility study. That specifically, the origin of that was specifically focused around middle school and the middle school study committee. Throughout last year. And and working in the district, I'm talking with our special education department, there was. Due to the number of students who received drop-in services and the number of students who received full preschool services. That it was worthy to expand the goal of a facility study, take a look about, take a look at what would it cost to either build. And and fund and staff of preschool compared to what we do currently, so that is undertaking, and at the next meeting we'll have. Some pretty good data about the cost of the Mount Vernon Village School in the district created their own preschool program, so that's one component of it. The second component, under Amy's leadership, we have commissioned. A enrollment study for the last three years through the New England Schools Development Council, NESDEC. And we'll look at projections and over time, their projections are turning out to be pretty accurate. Going forward. There's a projected enrollment getting up to, you know, near sixty. You know, fifty eight, fifty nine enrollment, and that would necessitate currently, there's right two classrooms per grade. So without taking a look at our facility, that could, we'll look at twenty nine, you know, just thirty, if it even grows further than a classroom. So the second component. Of the facility study would be to take a look at this site and what it would cost and how many classrooms wouldn't be necessary to to handle. Of, you know, periodic bubble. So it's a second component. Brief informal discussion, but we'll also get support from the architect engineering firm. To really understand how many classrooms you need for a bubble, but say if it was two classrooms, what that cost would be to support really for the next ten to twenty years, we don't expect more than. Two out of six bubble. Or two out of maybe three out of eight bubble. And then the third component is taking a look at what would it look like, what would look like, feel like, be experienced for youngsters as well as financially. If Mount Vernon kept the youngsters who head to Amherst for seventh eighth grade site. And so what we're, the plan is there is to work, Charlie and Zach, thank you for your participation on the committee. Is to take a look at, we've got a collection of every K eight school in New Hampshire. And ones with a similar population to see, so there's some models in Hampshire of a K eight about the size of this school. On what it looks like, what kind of, do they, like as Tom said, do they have band, do they, what kind of unified art programs do they have, and what kind of staffing do they use and the staffing, so. Charlie and Zach, Tom, I, Christine, and a whole bunch, Roger's gonna connect with the facility people, try to understand what the current model looks like in reality, maybe some visits to go see and talk with some folks. Including financially, how much it would cost to sustain, you know, that kind of program, so those are the three components. The committee is is well situated with members of administration, which are the board, members of the community, members of the staff, again, thank you for the participation. The one of the recommendation of the committee that was sent to the board and based on. Mount Vernon, the community has some very strong facility resource, some of the strongest community, is literally one of the greatest experts in the region on facilities that lives in Mount Vernon, and her recommendation last year was to put up a bid. On the architect engineering firm, and we have put it up to bid. Roger, I think the other day had a question and answer, we had available question and answers, I think it closes on the fourteenth. And I think we're gonna meet to review the RFPs on the twentieth, and then based on the number of RFPs we get. Develop the evaluation process, including. Asociations to joint facility and this group, if so desired, and also depending on where we are site visits, so actually go see a product that they've designed. I think we're in good shape. I appreciate and agree that putting it out to bid to find an architect maybe with experience, even K eight, you know, this is a unique place, it's a unique community, it's not. The, you know, the economy of scale is unique, how to do with the cost effective energy, so. I think we're in really good shape, good energy, and I'm enjoying the work and always love to learn, I'm learning about a K eight school. K eight school in Hampshire, so exciting. And did I miss anything?
From the committee. I think it'd be important to mention that we asked for quotes on. All the various different configurations, you might have said this, but that was kind of key to the community is. That we are not locked into only asking for largest size or only asking for the smallest. We we asked on bid for all various configurations. So to give us the most flexibility, whenever they come back to us to say, we want this kind of, this kind of, this kind.
How many responses have we?
I apologize, I don't know, I didn't check in with Roger on that. We didn't, we sent each other well today, we were focused on some, sorry, I apologize, but I can get that.
So, yeah, I have a question, so this is a multi-year process, which there's gonna be funds expended to go through this. So. I guess my question goes back to. What if this doesn't come to fruition? So gone out. Hired someone to design the building. Okay, we come to this agreement, it turns out this is something that. The town's not going, so it's just too expensive. What happens to those costs? Do we? Do we have an ability to get the state? Funding or offset for that, because this is pretty expensive, these are costs that can go. To other places, I mean, I get nervous when I hear the town's grumbling about five point eight percent. This is a big undertaking at some point, doesn't mean that we don't need to do it, because if the enrollment numbers are gonna be what they're going to be. This is something we're going to have this week, so there's gonna be a lot of. There's gonna be a lot of politicking going on for a lot of this, but I guess at the end of the day. This is expended, we have an ability to. When we pursue a particular project, if it doesn't go to fruition, we have something called deferred costs and Mary Amber times that. We're able to recruit that, we don't have that ability. So that's my one concern about this, because at the end of the day, this is something that may not come to pass. Yet, there's a lot of your time, a lot of resources devoted to this, and maybe for none.
I agree, and this is, I've struggled in my building and district leadership role in how New Hampshire funds public education. It was, I was the early superintendent when a governor who actually lived in my town ended building A's at A's in the tunnel. For two thousand eight, while the town voted, you got building A. And now it's not an entitlement, it is a competitive piece. Where Mount Vernon will not score particularly well in in some of the fields, it'll be a challenge to get building A. And so a community like this, yes, will has a lot of burden. Because there isn't the right expensive tax base, it's residential and New Hampshire funds it, it funds their schools on the back of property. Versus anything else, so I agree with you. The experience, I think, as we understand this community led by the board and Tom, you know, desperately wants to do what's best for kids. And how do we do it in the most fiduciary, right, and economic, economical, inefficient way is the charge. There is, you know, the one thing on the middle school piece, there is a some fixed cost right now that we know we pay. Approximately one point five million dollars to send our youngsters here. Seven months, whatever it is. So at least you have, you know, that's looking at, how is that the best spend? There's also a cost that we spend right now in preschool. But in early studies and complete transparency, it will not be more economic. To do preschool, but part of this will be an educational article, why everything is best educational for Mount Vernon kids littles to be educated on the site. And then there's reality of, because maybe it's burned in Tom's wonderful staff success, is that there's building going right, I've driven through this building going on and enrollment's increasing. And. Now the board will have to deal with, you know, class size, or grade size, grade size, six. Class size. You know, one of the, I think, one of the strongest decisions the board made a long time ago was solidified, you're going to. Right, two firsts, two second, two, because there was a time, I think, where it was, it was, it was not.
Every year it changed.
And that staffing and the morale and the riff, and then how you manage that, it's one of the best decisions you made, and I think you can contribute, attribute. To the incredible performance to that decision, because you have your training staff a long time, you can invest in math for a long time without, oh, I'm down to teacher, I'm leaving, and it's harder to attract teachers if they don't have. Solid job expectations, so this community, I think, made an incredibly wise decision, and you're even at benefits now. And you may be faced with, but you're doing this well, you're forecasting time, right, before the enrollment comes, we have some time to deal with that. And a lot of big decisions for communities in Hampshire. Because New Hampshire doesn't necessarily fund education, what I believe is what's best for kids.
To your your point about the cost. The community approved the sixty thousand dollars, so that's all we have, I think that's, that's, and then, yeah, our time is.
Yeah, and I'm not. Don't get me wrong, I'm not sending away, these aren't the things that we shouldn't be pursuing. These are things we should be pursuing, I just want. People to understand, because the these are investments, basically, you talk about the education, about providing a free. Well, preschool level, but what we're really talking about is investment in our schools, and if we're going to attract individuals into town. We have to give them a reason to move to this town. That's the only way you grow the tax base. You grow the tax base, you're able to resort to some of this stuff, it's basic math, so. Yeah, sometimes I get frustrated with this, because individuals are so shortsighted, but at the end of the day, this is our biggest asset. And if we don't invest in it and attract people here, I don't know what else to tell you, so. I'll get a point so fast.
No, no, I appreciate it's real, what you're talking about is real, it's real with the five point nine, you know, Mike and Amy and a little bit of me every once in a while, you know, take a look at that number. You know, one thing I learned last year and I talked about last year, consecutive defaults are difficult to overcome. You know, we are operating in a default, it's very important to the superintendent, I know, to do whatever we can to pass the budget, because consecutive defaults. It has a cascading effect on the ability, especially when you have a twenty one point eight percent. Health insurance, that some of those are not included in the default. Know that, so there's some challenges ahead, but this community is extraordinary, and the product delivery is exceptional. And I do believe that the board is trusted, because I burn that trust, communication, hard work. And I do believe that the board is trusted because I burn that trust, communication, hard work, analysis, we're here for it.
Anyone else? Comments or questions? Okay, next up on our agenda is discussion of board goals.
So Peter, I think we left it at the at the last time it is we were preparing the agenda for this meeting is. I think the board is ready to adopt and and at this moment, we've done about the board goals, this would be the the third time they're they're on the agenda. And I think uh we made some tweaks and 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 the members, they're in the packet and. Based on last month's meeting, I think the board's in a position to make the motions to adopt. But there can be a bit of discussion if we have to have further discussion, one.
We'll open it up to the board members, her comments, questions?
I think we're ready to adopt that.
Except a motion to accept the board goals as described in the.
Make that motion.
Motion to miss Lawrence, second, inkly, all those in favor of accepting the board goals as written? Thank you, and I will get my computer going on the flyer submission. I'm very tired, I'm guilty guilt. Board discussion, conversation on communication and advocacy.
Yeah, I think Sarah, yeah, well, we've talked last month, we want to talk a little bit about. Having a conversation on talking about how to, you know, talk about the budget, so you know. To discuss it with many members and and Peter mentioned there last night. Um we we held a listening session at the at the library, uh I was pleased with the attendance, I thought it was. Um a good amount of people, like ten, twelve people and and uh asked good questions. Uh I gave an opportunity for for myself to, you know, talk a little bit about the the SAU priorities. And then how all the three districts, especially number, have aligned the the priorities of the SAU. Um yeah, it was well received, we we did speak about the budget. And and talk about some of the the things that are included in the budget and, you know, why, uh you know. Things are the way they are, um and how the budget is a reflection of the direction of of Mount Vernon. Um and, you know, there was considerable conversation around. You know, that increase in in the insurance, uh and and kind of like trying to plan out and forecast out. Some of the projects to to make it uh so that the residents of Mount Vernon are positioned to support. Not only the school budget, but also town budget and projects in there and uh. And so some good things really kind of came out of it and we're going to kind of continue that work the best we can from from the SAU. But as partners with the school board and partners with with people in town. Uh and we echo that, you know, we would have any conversation. At any time with any of the people or individual that people can reach out and discuss it, but. At the at we're getting to a point now where, as you guys know, it's it's the board's budget and. And we're here to support and kind of keep doing some things, and as you ask questions, you know, we'll respond and and help and provide information. But I think that's kind of where we left it, Sarah.
Do you think that you could take the presentation that you shared uh with the community last night at the library and almost just like record it? So that it can be something that's put out because twelve people might swing a vote.
Yep.
But twelve people, there's way more than that that need to hear what's going on, um. And they'll hear it from the board when we present it, but I think that there is value. In hearing the why coming from the administrative team as well.
No, we can, we can absolutely do that, for the willing to, you know. Think of a way to.
I mean, even taking like taking Amy's presentation and, you know, doing like your voiceover work, yeah.
Yeah, no, we.
Just to have that available, I think, then, you know, give somebody a a link that they can say, I missed that, I missed that session, but here you go, now you can hear what. Was said and it gives people a heads up, and then I think putting stuff in the flyer and even taking some screenshots from the presentation and. Posting them reluctantly on Facebook. Um that's such a gray area for the board to do, but posting that to say this is where we're at so that people have a heads up, because I think. The thing that I learned last year was that people felt blindsided by the information, even though the information is readily available all along the way, so. Doing a better job of really getting it out there in advance and inviting that conversation, I think, will make a difference.
Now, um I want to update you on a couple of things that we're doing. Internally as an SAU, but to your to your question, uh are you comfortable with that? Communication, the video, voiceover, you know, presentation is done after draft three. You know, as we kind of get into it or or maybe a little.
I think the sooner you put something out there, the sooner we put something out there, the better. Because it'll allow people to start asking questions.
Yeah, perfect, um.
I think, but I mean, don't, there's more than me here.
Yeah, so so other things that are happening around communication, the direction of the SAU and then the direction of of Mount Vernon is. Uh we're going to put some uh newsletter out, you know, we've been pretty intentionally quiet and I think I've told people why they've always. September, October, we kind of want to put our heads down and work, develop the budget. Uh you know, make sure that the the school year started priorities and all three districts. Um and in Mount Vernon are are aligned to the SAU, that things are, things are going, so we'll put a newsletter of some sort in the multiple mediums. So wishing to get out in the very near future. Uh in early December, we're hoping to put out uh some communication around the priorities and the goals of 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 the district. To to the townspeople and the and the families. So we can just start people see like, what what are we, what are we working on, you know, um. Where are our energies? And and I think those things can help and we can absolutely add this to the list of of things. To do, because at the end of the day, you know, I completely agree with with, you know, you want budgets to pass. Right, and you want budgets to be as fiscally responsible as they can. And, you know, whatever we can do and I can do to to help support that, we're absolutely do that and and we know, you know, the. It's a unique situation that that the town of Mount Vernon is ending it on still. Town budgets and the school budgets, so.
We had a question, John and.
Yes, John Cornman, Dave Martin, where it goes to the full word test. Also, form morally goes to select the president. Uh on that point, that's the reason I came there, I spoke to someone who was at the presentation, possibly I could be there way too many meetings. But anyway, um yeah, communications, the hardest part. Uh for the town, it always is, uh I bet it's like a long time, it's a long time. And getting the word out the way you would want it to get out is nearly impossible. When we lost the Amherst Citizen actually being a paper that was delivered everybody's uh box, that hurt us tremendously. But I just want to give you a little bit of an update, it's on the town side, I know we run like parallel governments here. Um on the town government side, uh we created a strategic advisory committee back at the beginning of twenty twenty two. And uh they spent all twenty twenty two basically codifying and editing down our massive plans that actually makes sense. Which they completed by December last year, this year, they've been took the entire year, I don't know if everyone's familiar with it, the capital improvement program. For town, basically identifying all the large ticket items, like but you try and see out as far as you can. They are, they are right now the final phases of completing a CIP which looks out fifteen years. They've identified from all departments, all the major purchases or projects going to have to be tackled. Uh but they delivered their first draft back on October thirtieth, and end of this month, they'll be finished with a second draft. As well hopefully approved by the planning board and the select board. Now, I'm thinking maybe the communications piece, because our timelines are roughly the same. Uh the CIP uh committee is Paul Verter's chair. They plan on doing a a big presentation to the town sometime in the first two weeks of January. It might be a good IT, I mean, I'll just put it out there, maybe a side by side presentation. About what's going on in the town, they were trying to draw people in to get more informed about what's happening, I think. The worst thing for me is a slight one is like. Not last year, people walk in the door and they see like four or five giant warrants, it's here's the hello. And they don't know where it came from, now that that's entirely my fault, they could pay attention to a few things, but uh. What we're trying to do is get the word out so people aren't surprised when they work out, at least they've heard about it, they know roughly what it's about, they know roughly. How much money is concerned, we're trying to get the uh transform as best we can, and I know it's not the battle. I was just thinking maybe um. Alright, so like I said, our timelines are roughly the same, some kind of co-presentation, maybe in January, maybe that'd be a good idea if you guys want to consider it. Because obviously, we both have to get our budgets passed and, you know, I'm definitely afraid that uh. People aren't going to approve anything because again, they might feel overwhelmed by um, because I, I look, it's a situation where all of. Trying to get things done at a reasonable cost, you know, something that doesn't um basically put the people in a fear mode. So I just put that out there, and like I said, I'd like us to communicate more, that's partially my fault. You guys actually paid more money than I did, so. But anyway, we do need to communicate more, I just thought this would be a good time to start.
No, that's good information, thank you, because we we've all agreed that we, every avenue that we can pursue, we should to get the. Get the message out. I also thought the comment was made last night about your your video YouTube skills. So at so at some point, well, you're Captain Crunch too, so you're.
Multi-talented. That is a superpower right there. I only break that out on the weekends.
But, you know, collectively, can we at some point make a video? With voiceover from multiple people explaining. Amy's not liking this idea.
I think what, you know, what we can do is we can take this, that, you know, uh suggestions, feedbacks and ideas and and we can kind of talk as a group. On uh how we can, you know, support this process and uh, you know, partner with the school board and partner with town. Uh we absolutely are open to it, it's been something that we've talked about. Uh and so I think uh it's it's a well timed conversation, it's a well timed to to attend. You know, the meeting and uh so what, and I took some notes, I got some thoughts and we kind of get back to some ideas.
And I just wanted to add, um John, the Amherst town does a CIP, we get CIP classes as well and. Um there's a couple of board members that just pay and I actually just paid in that and we bring. For all of our large projects over uh seventy five thousand dollars and they're included on CIP. Um so that they have the the school district projects, including um. Including items that are paid for out of uh capital reserves. So we have the congregation account reserve and then the projects and how they're, you know, um. So like the large scale project that have been done here are are there and that and are uh projects. So they're included on the big spreadsheet.
Yeah, well, I think I was talking to Paul Verter, like I said, he shared, I did, he wants to get together with schools.
Yeah.
So can we, should we provisionally agree to his proposal? At least, I mean, I'll I'll certainly attend, but I I don't want to, I'd like us to be able to speak in board.
So we'll connect and get dates from data, but you know, when, what time?
He might be meeting again November twenty first, that's their next meeting.
And you said Paul's the chair?
It's all on the town, what's that?
Okay.
What'd you say, November twenty one?
Twenty one, thank you.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you you do such a good job talking to us in the slides, I figured, natural. Just your voice. We we have the slides up.
Well, and it might be as simple as taking the recording of a meeting like this and snipping out that section, right, and sharing that, I mean, that's. Share minutes twenty two thirty four.
Walking us through it, so that's, it was. Didn't expect you to be that white now. So the other thing, one other comment, and we keep going back to last night, one other comment was made about not knowing about. Events and I I'm on the SAU calendar and I'm pretty much seeing everything, so I don't.
Yeah, I think sometimes, you know, people work in different spots and 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 there's multiple ways they get information and I think that happens. And, you know, it's uh, it it it's something that we'll continue to work on, try to be diligent. Uh about updating and 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 keep it current and um, but I understand, like, we hear that quite a bit, you know. Forever and I will tell you, in education, there's never been a year that I communicated so well that people said, you got really good well with communication this year. And uh so we're just going to kind of keep keep working on that journey and uh we just said, hey, if anyone has questions about things, if they can't see it. They can always reach out to us and, you know, be be a Chelsea, you know, at the SAU and. Um we'll call and we'll 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 get it to them, so.
November twenty first at what time?
So.
Be nice to see everybody.
Mike, we never, your your principal's report was not part of the agenda, but do you want to touch down on your principal's report at all?
Uh that I think first thing was including, include the superintendent's report in this one.
That's just us. Thank you. Um our next item to discuss is the board update on the school calendar.
Yeah, this came out of uh while we were talking about uh snow days, last month, we had a conversation. Uh with MBEA, right, and then Andrew wanted us to provide some even more information, like how we got there. And 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 for me, you know, uh, you know, the the making up of snow days. Uh is is something that is in conversation uh now in SAU thirty nine and all three. Three districts at various levels, um so it's 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 something that is, you know, of interest. For for people and I've visited all the schools, you know, probably since our last meeting and and. And before I I kind of get into talking a little bit about it, I'll have kind of Steve weigh in a little bit because he was part of the the history of it. And we can answer some questions, but but for me, as as superintendent, I'm in my first year as superintendent, and this is where my message is. You know, as the instructional leader, as the lead educator, as the superintendent. You're not going to hear me advocating for less instructional time, you're just not going to hear it. If other people decide that that's in the best interest of students in the towns, they can make that decision. But as superintendent, fundamentally on learning, fundamentally on providing a stable place for kids to be there longer. The opportunity to increase outcomes for certain students, not all students, hopefully all students, but certain students at different grade levels with different. You know, cohorts, I I'm always going to be doing that. However, I get that, you know, in in our SAU and in particularly in MB, you know, you know, Mount Vernon. It it is a complicated like store and so I just need to say that out loud, I said it in every audience I've been in, we had a great. Chat yesterday, you know, you know, I came up here and talked with with Charlene and Maggie and and that's just where I'm at and and I think. I would be remiss as the superintendent to say anything differently, right? And I think that would be a disservice to my role and my responsibility to to the providing. You know, the, you know, best education we can. And so there's been a lot of like debate versus hours versus days. Yeah, you know, fifteen minutes were versus this time and for me. You know, it comes down to, you know, people also brought up cost, you know, like how much does it cost and Andrew, we got a number, you know, for you. I came in a little bit later, you know, but it's roughly uh seven, you know, for transportation, seven hundred and four dollars a day. And five cents, you know, an additional cost to make up, you know, we made up days beyond what we already assume. So that was one of the questions I had on my list.
No, my question was, how much would it cost us if we were willing to follow the recommendation of the? MBEA, like, so you're telling us it will actually save us money to give these workers? Extra days off, is that what you're saying to me?
Yeah, it would cost us more money to run run the buses, those additional days.
Okay.
So the only cost is is of buses, everyone else is paid, last year, everyone else was paid out. So the only cost is, is of buses, everyone else is paid, last year, everyone else was paid out. Um, some had to work out, remember that was, some had to work those days, but everybody was paid their contracts in full. But the, the additional costs that this district would encumber compared to. Like, we have a hundred and seventy-five day school calendar, if we have five snow days and we go to a hundred and seventy, there's five days of transportation. Right, that we don't pay for. So, but if you decide to make up the snow days and have the hundred and seventy-five that, you know, that is in the, in the. Calendar outside of snow days, it would cost you seven hundred dollars more per day, every snow day costs a seven hundred bucks to run those buses. Yes.
Every snow day that is made up.
Correct, right, that's correct.
Which is up to five.
Yeah.
And after five, you make one.
Yeah. So what, uh. What they came to us last time and requested would actually save us money?
It would, it wouldn't possibly. Spending additional.
Right. Thank you.
So, uh, you know, I spent, um. Significant time last year in engine, full transparency. This is not a minimum hours issue. The Mount Vernon, uh, Villa School meets the minimum hours required by the Hampshire State Minimum Standard. Just so you know, that's not in discussion. Um, Charlie and I don't know if you remember the time you did on the board, it was a barrier to write, it was very clear and we, we, we were in agreement. There wasn't anything disputable, right, we came to an agreement that. So this isn't about being the minimum standard, it's one of our districts only makes the minimum standards if we make up the snow day. Because of their instruction and that's not the case here. This is the case about collective bargaining agreement. And, right, that what the contract says and what the board wants to do and it says, the, the contract says, the board may wait, I think one of the things. That I was remiss last year is your interim soup all over this district and I think it was remiss because of past practice. Even when I was here, it was just sort of a little, little assistant, my first year. The superintendent didn't come to the boards at any boards. And have the decision about wait, the superintendent just assumed and did it and I think we lost the formality because the contract says the board may wait. Not little Stevie Chamberlain who talked with everybody else, it's the board. And this year, we, last year, we did actually have. Board meeting and the board decided, but. I think, um, you know, this year we did too, this year we said the board will be making, right, cause what happened last year is one of the prevailing arguments was. Because it wasn't done throughout the year, it would have been a surprise to the community to change the start, right, the end date so late, that was a compelling argument. For me, as your, as your interim soup. So we made a commitment with MBEA, with the board last year to beat over the summer and notify them early, well before the season. We did everything we said we were gonna do. And now it's in discussion in the board table. But it's not a minimum standard, please know that and don't think I'm intim- intimating that it is, cause it is not.
If it's okay to speak, it was, there's actually days over minimum.
Yes. True, I, I want to be honest and transparent.
I appreciate that.
Just so you know. That's my goal. And Charlie knows, Maggie knows, everybody knows, I love school. I love kids coming to school and learning, learning from incredible teachers, having free lunch, not being sensitive to. To parents who have to do another, now, if, if we have five, we would wait five, that's a two week earlier than the traditional a hundred and eighty days. Most of my career, I worked in districts where the kids went a hundred and eighty days. And I couldn't believe that we were talking about a hundred and seventy, I didn't know a hundred and seventy exist. In New Hampshire until I came to SAU thirty. But last year was a hundred and sixty-nine full days of school. Last year in the Mount Vernon Village School. And. Eight, nine halves? Last day, ten halves, I forget, cause sometimes we wave one at the end of the year, but maybe you're on those.
Nine half.
Nine halves.
And nine, uh, late start. Uh, plan.
And full transparency, we subtracted the two hours a day, we, we did it all.
We subtracted all of that, we didn't count, um. Quiet time, we didn't count and I, I would be happy to. You know, have, have that conversation and go over the times again, I think we were diligent on all sides.
And I was just trying to put on the table that this is about the board's belief about construction, but it's not. It's again, one district, it's an easy decision because I could go to their group and say, if we don't do this, we're violating. That's compelling, right, on my, last year was my credential. I have to make sure we certify those days, it's not the case in Mount Vernon. So.
Comments from board members, anybody have opinions? Yay, nay? And, uh, I'm.
This is inflicted of it. This, this sounds like Mount Vernon's already moved to the four-day work week, so to speak. But with they haven't, they're coming in for the fifth day and. For no reason. Like, I don't see any reason to make up these days. Because the students have already received the instruction, we have pooped last year, but successful. To get the highest possible score, like, the school have been rated very highly. With this. Uh, these number of school days and these hours in the past.
Then modify the contracts to. To match that.
Okay.
Modify the contracts down by five days to match that, so that people are fulfilling their contractual obligation. Who likes that? Anybody like that?
Can we modify them?
I don't love that. I'd rather have teachers get paid for teaching and have our students in the classroom doing that, but.
I agree.
Yeah, we can modify contracts, we can go back into negotiations with the MBEA and discuss that and.
And we've been clear that it's not an issue of the time, I think you have staff here and all of this data would be willing to look at that. The issue for, um, the perspective of our membership is. We didn't bring that forward, the hours based calendar was not something we advocated for, we didn't ask for, we were going along with the request that was presented to us. And that the practice has always been, we never had to stand before you and petition those days. It was understood, there have been years we've had one snow day. And that one snow day was waived, there have been years that we've had three snow days and the three snow days have been waived. There have been years we've had eight snow days and five were waived. And the three were made up. And. You know, we're, I believe quite truthfully, because we, we respect you and I believe that you respect us, that we're caught between a rock and a hard place now. Because that language is pretty obscure. It is, you know, and, and we're arguing, um. That, you know, moving forward, we, we would certainly entertain the possibility of it, but again. And there are many in the membership to maintain. That was part of past practice, we didn't initiate it, we just. You know, dealt with it, it's how it happened. Um. And sometimes it works out that you have that one snow day, sometimes it works out that you have more. Um. I, I was very clear and I think honest with Mike in my conversation that I feel like if. Um, and I do believe it's because in all honesty, Steve says the currency of school improvement is time. But had Steve not been here, I don't think we'd be having this conversation and the practice would be, we'd be continuing those. We have no studies, cause it's what we did, it's just what everybody did. Right or wrong, it's what happened. It's what happened for the prior, previous tenure. It just happened.
Can I, I'm gonna pop in, Mike, would you have thought that you would waive snow days? Just to Charlene's point, like if you were looking at this, if you looked at the contract. Would you say to yourself, I'm waiving snow days, no problem? I'm just curious, and if you don't want to answer.
Absolutely poisoned everybody's. No, for me, like, I think people know, in, in, in a previous life, I had the longest school. School. Day in the state, I advocated for that.
Yeah.
Now, I'm a similar thought, you know, I enjoy. Having a school be the hub of the community, I enjoy kids being at school, I enjoy families having to. Have a, a place where they can send their kids and have people that care about them and they can learn from them. I enjoy people, you know, and, you know, that, hey. Plainly speak, like, it gives people, in the summer, extends the school year before the summer camps kick in. And you have that, that window where you can send your kid, there's all sorts of benefits, like, being in school. Uh, for me, I would have looked at the contract and. Come down to like, alright, here's what we're contracted, contractually obligated to, here's what we're doing. Where as steward of taxpayer dollars, I don't think I would have waived, recommended, right? That's the honest truth based on that, you know, it's tactic, we're talking about taxpayer dollars. About nickel and dime in the budget, trying to find, I'm sitting here trying to find fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, you know what I mean, and different things as this goes on, I walk into Amy's office and say, hey, how can we do this? Because I take being the steward of taxpayer dollars really, you know, seriously, so there's the learning and the educational side and the social side, but then there's the business side, then when you put them all together. It just feels like this is what's the right thing for me to do and I know it's been done this way, but I wasn't sitting in the seat of. The superintendency, right, and I, and, and I know the outcomes. Here, I can't, you know, it's a good place to be and I've talked to them repeatedly about, it's a good place to be. And, but for me, you know, Sarah, I appreciate, you know, in our conversations that you say. You ask the questions, right, and, and you say, you know, what you think and, and I have to do the same, right, and, and I, and. And although I'm a first-year superintendent, but I've been in education for twenty years. I kind of, I feel like I understand what works, what's good for educational experience, what's good for outcomes, what's good for taxpayers, what's good for families. And I feel like this makes sense, it's unfortunate for me that this is, was the practice, like, I never heard of a one-seventy. You know, you know, you know, the, you know, contract and there's never heard of that, right? I never heard of that, that calendar, never one-seventy-five days, we always had hours. Right? But it wasn't hard to get past the minimum hours in most places and so there were the hours. And then there was the contractual obligations and, and then that's kind of how we teased it out. And that's for me, where I'm at and, and I'm not sure I answered it like. Concisely and directly, but it's multifaceted when I look at it.
So then what is the path forward, is the path forward to sit down with the MBEA and like come up with an MOU or change the wording or what is it? Because. What I'm hearing is frustration on one side and you have a clear vision on this side and. I, I mean, I can't say what the board's direction is, but I know what my direction would be, that if taxpayers are paying for the teachers to be teaching, then. It's our obligation to uphold the contract, otherwise we need to reduce the contract to match what is happening there for. Because we have a responsibility to taxpayers.
For me, sitting right here. Those are your two options. But there could be other options that I haven't thought about, right? And, and I'm not saying I have all the answers, you know, and be naive to say, you know, but to me, those seem like two, two of the scenarios.
Does the contract state the board may waive five days?
Yeah.
So we don't need to change the contract, that's as a board, we can just decide to waive those five days without changing any contract? Correct?
So, so the, the funky piece is the. Existence or the validity of the notion of past practice. So in my training. Uh, in order for a past practice that violates language, it has to be a written MOU. So the language clearly says an MBEA would agree, the board may wait. Hmm, for ten, twelve, whatever number of years, the board. I wish there was an action on every year, the board did waive, but it was waived.
There were some years I recall. There wasn't actually. I believe, I, do you recall, Sarah? Yeah, you don't recall that?
I don't recall.
I recall conversations at board meetings, I don't know if they were official votes, I remember Peter each year would always come and say, oh, here's the, this is my snow days we've had, this is where the end of the year will be. I, I remember those, that Peter coming to the board to discuss calendar, I don't recall whether it was like. Your action, I go back through, I'm gonna ask around the place.
So it's, it's the. If the MBEA believes that their definition of past practice is simply what the board has done for twelve years. Versus the other interpretation is that, um, this, it's not a past practice. Because it has, it violates the contract and now that's not in writing and signed, it's an apology. So if there is a, an honest disagreement about the board's authority here, one thing the board could do in joint with MBEA is ask for an arbitrator decision. And I'm not sure, I'm trying to look, does the MBEA contract binding arbitration or just, um. Advising.
Honestly, I don't know the answer to that because we've never, we've never had a need to do any of it.
Right, so, like, some contracts in the, in this are binding arbitration and that means whatever the arbiter says goes. If it's advising only, they advise the board and the board says, no arbitrator says, the board says, I don't care what you say. So you could, you could seek an advisory opinion from an arbitrator to say for, if they have the authority. And then that answers the past practice question. And that can be done jointly, that can, doesn't have to be adversarial, there's a question about that line in the contract, how much does, this, and, and we talk about this all the time. This, if, if MBEA has a, if, if they have a belief and the board has a question, we can seek help on that. And do this together mutually and then you'll know if they have the authority to do it. I, I've never seen long contract language that says may. You know, say it's not May, but I'm not an expert in this, I just, you know, I didn't say it holiday in.
So, yes. We can, as, as a board, vote right now or whenever to. Decide to waive those.
So there, there was a vote to make them up.
Oh, okay.
It was, you, you charge the superintendent, write a letter to the MBEA notifying them that we would make him snow days issue as requested last year, that was done. I did that, hence they came last meeting and they discussed it, you asked to reconsider.
And I, and I was, I didn't join the board until after that.
Right, or I think you, right, you weren't.
The audience, I think.
Um, no, that was, that was about the office cap.
Okay.
But yes, if, if the board wanted to, if you wanted to make a motion, reconsider the vote on that day, that is a legal motion. Or you can seek an opinion or. You can reconsider it in discussion and there's no motion to change the board's action. Those are all options, or you could have a. Charge the whip and figure out a, a happy medium this year, is there a middle ground? All those are your options, cause this is very collaborative with. I, we don't want this to be adversarial.
Not to do it, we really turned it off, that's not the point.
We've never been adversarial.
And.
In my, we want to maintain that.
In clogging this, you know, but. To me, it is, I, I can't, I'm not unlike Mike, I just. I have this bird that I've been in this building watching kids. Work with both of you and the notion that they get to do that for another week, I can't look you in the eye and say, that's not the best thing in the world. So I just can't do it, I don't have that envy, but I understand and I also understand that. I'm, you know, people think I'm really not that much of a whack job. I didn't have people go like, like, I don't, I would not be sitting here, let's go to school June twenty-sixth, when it's the fourth day of a hundred degrees. That's not it, but I'll be honest with you, last year, so many high school graduated on June second, everybody. June second. That's, there's more instruction and there's more learning and there's more time than June second. And, and.
I'll give you an example, which is mine, it's a short, it's a short calendar in SAU thirty-nine. You know, and, and, you know, when I. Good. College of mine in Georgia graduated the Friday before Memorial Day, which is a week earlier, right? They start August seventh. You know, I just need people to know, it's a short calendar in SAU thirty-nine, any way you skin it. And people are very comfortable with it because it's been in place for a while and I don't blame people questioning why the potential shift or the change of practice. I get it, I, I understand the perspectives of, of, of teachers and, and families, but for me, what I think is sound educational business. Is, you know, being in school. Being the stewards of taxpayer dollars. Providing that consistency and steadiness. And that, that, that is me. And, you know, how we can, like, I, I'm glad people are, are sitting at the table, you know, wanting to collaborate, wanting to have a two-way conversation. Wanting to figure, figure this out, it doesn't go unnoticed that this is a, a substantial shift in. In, 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 in mindset here and, and I know that. And I, yeah, at the end of the day, you know, they. They, they hired people, you know, hired me to be the superintendent, this is like, you know, an approach that I support. You know, people to me think, you know, when we look at. You know, cost per pupil and people like in this town. Talk about ROI. And taxpayer dollars, there's pressures from all different angles of this, it's not just on the teachers or students or administrators or. It's all taking all the different opinions and perspectives and doing what is. What is manageable and, and at the end of the day, what I think is in the best interest of as many students and families. As possible, you know, and it's complicated and it's not an easy. It's not an easy thing to sort through and so I do appreciate everyone in the room being, you know, like, you know. Professional and diplomatic and, and kind and honest. And, and saying their piece. But I, I would like to. Try to get to something and even if it's not tonight, get to some sort of, you know, correction because I did wake up at three forty-five just in case. The wintry mix amounted to anything and, you know, and I was like, please don't let this be the day that something has to be delayed or a snow day. You know, and I was like, please don't let this be the day that something has to be delayed or a snow day, right? I'm not ready to do that, right? So you're, you know, no, I I, you know, but Ben, you know, I was on the text with Ben today.
Job.
So, but you see what I'm saying? Like, we we gotta kind of get something in there so people know, right? And and that's kind of where I'm at. And so Steve, you know, kind of brought some options that we have here through his experience, you know, navigating these things. Christine's painted a little bit of context from being here. Charlene and and Maggie have a, you know, perspective there. You guys have a perspective. So I I'm just hoping we can kind of sort through a little bit, and if it's not tonight, it's gotta, it's gotta be in in December, you know what I mean, for me, so.
I'd rather not belabor the point, you know, for all, we all think it should happen, set a simple vote, if it doesn't work. And it doesn't go forward, we can make a motion to not reconsider it until next year. Uh, I just think it'd be good to, I mean, on, you know, behalf of the teachers, behalf of the taxpayers, every mind, behalf of the kids who would love to have this for. Five days off in summer. I have children. This is what they would want. Uh, you know, I I will make a motion to reconsider decision to not waive the school, the class noted, the class noticed. You have a second? I'll make a motion to not reconsider that, or maybe it's for you.
You don't have.
There we go, so the decision stands.
Yeah, okay.
And our agreement is binding for the contract.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, costs are shared.
So um, and the M B A can obviously have a lot of options as well.
And we're going this to discuss the, for your.
Um, the one question I have. Also has to do with the calendar. And that money note, right? Has to do with um, the teacher conference day on the sixteenth, which is uh, S A U Y. Is that the day? Because we're waiting to get the first quarter grades into the hands of the parents and the. I guess my question is, we have Veterans Day, then we have Thursday. Off for students, and then we follow that up with three days off of Thanksgiving, so we're kind of off heavy. Is there any reason why? Is there any reason why we don't pull this teacher conference into the last week of October? I mean, it's still a day in the calendar built in, but it just seems like we have a lot of off days back to back to back to back. And maybe this is the way the calendar's been built for multiple years and I I just noticed it, but I was curious. If there's, I mean, we can't move Veterans Day and we can't move Thanksgiving.
We have many different options with conferences over the years. Um, some years we actually had the day after Halloween, which. Teachers loved because students didn't have to come to school after eating a giant bag of candy. But uh, that was a little, the feedback was it was a little awkward because it was a little early, like the quarter was almost ending, but not quite. So our quarters are equally spaced. Um, a again, a big reason for that too is the high school because we need, you know, we have semester courses. Um, so we do try to equally space those. So part of it is the quarter ending and then a little bit of time before we can report out. Um, the feedback from teachers has always been, it's much easier to actually have progress reports in hand and ready to hand families on conference day. Rather than having conferences prior to um, the quarter ending or report cards or progress reports being ready. Uh, so that is one of the challenges and that timing doesn't always, and again, we started. School a little bit later this year too. It was after Labor Day, so each year depending on when we start, it can kind of shift around and so does Veterans Day. Um, so you know, it's something we can look at. Um, and in the past, this is something new this year in the past, um, M B A has always had um, a early release instead. Um, and now this is um, a a day instead. So that's a change. We used to have our in-service day actually, but again, it was an odd one day. Our in-service day up here used to coincide with the Amherst Conference Day, but we want to try to keep calendars the same for everyone.
So thank you. And I see a lot of head nodding, which is, everything is great. My follow-up is, doesn't make sense that instead of Thursday, that we pull it back to Monday. So that the kids get a three-day weekend. It just seems clunky to me that. You know, we got Veterans Day on Friday and that's gonna move a little bit. I got it. And then, you know, we're off Thursday and then they're coming back for Friday and then they're back for three or maybe two and a half and. I'm just asking if that one day of teacher conferences can could float to make it a three-day weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea. We can, it was, it's hard for everybody wants.
Next year, that's all.
We don't like it either. It's hard. It's hard to move to Amherst, uh, to to align with the, align with the Amherst.
We're driving up here.
Makes more sense.
I'll throw it to you. Yeah, no, I I made a deal with it and we have to start to build uh.
For next week.
Next year, next year's calendar and and make a proposal, some recommendations, so.
And if that doesn't make sense, to just keep it the way it is, but I just.
Yeah, the only thing, one thing we did try years and years ago, probably eleven or so. On the Thanksgiving week for conferences and no one showed up for conferences, people took the whole week off. So um, we've even had that sometimes with a three, a three-day week. If we have it on a Friday, parents just. Go away for a long weekend, which is luckily, but then we don't get as much um. Attendance at conferences, but that's, it it's it's tricky.
Yeah, oh, I know. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, our next um, item is our availability for public input to to.
We have uh, someone online. You wanna do that?
Sure.
See if I can do this. I'm done with the owl.
Lori, can you hear me? I can.
Great, we can hear you.
I think that there um, has been a misunderstanding about the collective bargaining language. And I attempted to raise my hand before the vote took place. The I I did participate um, in the negotiations. That added this language to the collective bargaining agreement. And the term may was not a term of a decision being made by the school board. As to whether or not to waive days. The term may was a decision as to how many days. The decision was whether or not you would waive five days, four days, three days, two days, or one day. So we have um, collective bargaining notes from the time that this language was added. That made it clear, it was not a decision as to whether or not you are going to waive days. It's whether or not you're going to waive five days. So I think that that needs to be told um, as you're listening to this issue. Um, as Steve suggested, we can go to arbitration and make this clear. Um, I'd be, I'm certainly looking forward to doing that. But I do think it was important for you to know exactly what the intention of that language was.
What what year negotiations was that, Lori?
Uh, it must have been after two thousand and twelve because that's when I came to this area.
So do you think it was your first time, was it your first time with this area? Does it go back? Because we'll have to go back and try and find those notes. Um, so I appreciate that, Lori. Any any help you can be on what year that was.
Sure, I would be happy to let you know what year, Steve. I'll look, look it up.
Thank you.
But I believe that, but Steve, I do believe you had been made aware of this. Through the email that Mr. Dustin sent to the Amherst School Board. Um, back in, uh, I think it was just a few weeks ago. So I'm I'm pretty sure that Grant Dustin informed the Amherst School Board, including you, of the intention of the language.
I I didn't read that in context of M V E A at all.
It was, it's the same language.
Yeah, but I didn't, I I, I I didn't. Again, I if I read, I read that, but I I didn't connect that to anything here. Um. It is, it is the same words may, but I didn't, but I'm glad to revisit that, but no, I didn't connect that to this contract.
Yeah.
So Lori, do me a favor, just for the record, could you just tell your full name and where you're from?
Sure, I'm Lori Hayes. I actually am speaking to you as the representative of the Teachers Association. I do happen to be a Mount Vernon citizen as well.
Thank you. So as a follow-up, we'll research.
Yeah, we see, yeah, and any help you can be on the years, and I'll revisit. Uh, that Mike and I will revisit that email in the context of this collective bar agreement as well.
And school board members that year, Kim Robert, Tom Driscoll, John Finland, Trevor Gerard, and Bruce Schmidt. And Peter was superintendent at the time, yeah.
Are you all set?
I am, thank you.
And we have someone else too. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna figure out how to get this back. To uh, no longer analyst. They go to a penny. There is, sorry about that. This nowadays.
Do you have a name or?
Uh, so we have another one. And promote, is that right? What pounds? And this is Eileen Neighbors.
Hi, Eileen, could you tell us your name and where you're from for the record, please?
Oh, she hasn't appeared yet. She's up here, but we don't have the camera on yet. We like the camera on. Turn your camera on and say it fully. Eileen, can you hear us?
Now you can hear me.
We got you, we got you.
Okay, Eileen Neighbors, fourteen Beach Hill Road. And I'd like to make two comments on the reference you made to communication with the public. I've gone on the S A U calendar. I did that earlier this week. Uh, looking up to see when deliberative session would be. And to look up as to when the hearing would be on the S A U budget. The district, um, deliberative session for Sohegan. And for Amherst were both listed on the calendar. Mount Vernon was not. I knew it would be the next night because you always do them in sequence. Also, there is a um, uh, Ooh, S A U public hearing listed on November thirtieth. Which I would guess is your public hearing for your S A U budget, but it didn't, all it said was eleven thirty. S A U public hearing. No definition of why the public hearing, what it was about or anything, so. Two lapses in communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. We missed you last night.
Yes, I had a family event that I really had, family first.
We got your questions though. We got your questions.
You're all.
Yep, thank you. Uh, do we have any non-public tonight? No.
Last words or comments from fellow board members for items to discuss?
So Pete, the Mount Vernon public hearing is on. So and the deliberative it says as well, and then S A U budget. The public hearing, and then we'd also send out um, notices to newspapers and post them. Trump, Trumpa, it's on the calendar.
The the calendar that's integrated into our website, that calendar's busy. Um, it's really helpful if users go in and uncheck what they don't want to look at because there are a lot of school events. On the calendar, but we have school board meeting only, so if you check that, um, and you can actually even uncheck. You know, choose just Mount Vernon School Board or, and then it's um, a little easier to view.
But January tenth, Mount Vernon um, School Board Public Hearing. Is on there, on there, and then um, in February, Mount Vernon's School District Deliverer Session. So maybe in your summary on the flyer, you can put upcoming important dates.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
That's a good idea.
And then I guess. It would be hard to add narrative for the public hearing, but.
Yeah, I was just thinking, maybe this is a Brian I T request. But maybe he could put a quick instruction box above between the calendar and all the checked things.
Yeah.
Simple, check unchecked the items you're not interested in or or some.
The deselect all and.
Let the items that you're interested in populate the calendar more easily. Just a little bit of instruction there, because it it is busy, but there's a lot of.
That way you can, instead of having to uncheck everything, deselect all and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Because right now you have to do.
So we uh, we recognize that Trump is a bit clunky. And it's not, not as user-friendly and as we would like, and uh. We will uh, continue to to revisit some of the communication tool.
Stuff is there.
So it's there, it's just, it's just not as user-friendly as some other, some other stuff. And uh, so yeah, we'll add it to the list of of things to to look into. So, so that's probably where she couldn't see it, you know, it is.
So and you gotta hold over to see, you know, the the full card.
I understand.
Right, it's either really easy to fix or really hard to fix, so. It's either part of Trumpa or because we're using Trump, we can't do that.
We should do a little video. There's even um, a table format that you can look at it and there is an unselect all at the bottom, but is the tiniest little thing, Jeff, I never even knew it was there until I'm like, oh. Is there or is there not? There is a none and an all for selecting, um, but with a little light. Info video, I mean, had it or some more. It's so. Yes, it's.
No, no.
You hadn't said something, I would have never seen. Yeah, but I'm like staring, like, there's gotta be some way to do.
I'll take a motion to adjourn at seven eighteen.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Matt.
I think I, I again, I just had a little. Also, I remember when we were talking about communication, having to do with budget. One thing I was thinking, um, you know, people wanna get that kind of T L D R, the whole thing. I was wondering whether. It could be have like maybe an F A Q about the budget, like I was thinking, you have like. Like questions like, you know, how much of this budget is really optional and how much advantage or a liquid answer? Um, you can have F A Qs sometimes that are like, kind of self-congratulatory F A Qs, but if actually have tough questions like. Is there anything that we could push off? If we pushed off this line item, would it, what would the consequence be? Like, things like that that we have to account for people, maybe it would get, get them to understand.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing I was thinking, you should probably do TikToks on YouTube if you're gonna do your video.
Yeah, TikTok, hundred percent. He's not wrong.
A lot of clicks.
My triple dog dare.
It would be, if you want.
Not to any double dog dare here, triple dog dare.
We, that's how we fund the schools, right? TikTok advertisements.
I'm doing TikTok, so it's fun.
There we go, there we go, alright. I got my wheels spinning.
Actually, more more seriously, I don't know, I was thinking about the uh. Like our work, sometimes we have these videos that you can make that are called doodle videos, they're not like that, where where you record a little bit of. Audio and they have this, you know, like drawing a pie chart, if you'll hand that draws like on a weight board. I think they're fairly easy to make on websites and if you, you know, make points about. Here's how much the increase is with a video like that, you don't have to be on the video, but it's, people understand it and and it's got graphical, you know, a little graphical to it.
Well, one thing about that is. A lot of the budget is very confusing and I've been through this multiple years and I still lose my head. But like, what exactly is a default cuz budget and what does it mean and? It's just really simple questions with simple answers that I think would help walk people down the road a little bit, so I think it's a good point.
Matt, did no one tell you that part of being on the budget committee was making TikToks and doodle videos?
Sorry, I didn't see you earlier. Motion to adjourn at seven twenty-one.
Make a motion.
I'm sorry, second, all in favor? Thank you.